The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Monday, February 12, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Please rise and pledge and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otte.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us, and I'm looking for a motion for approval. Commissioner Otte.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Over here. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. I have no announcements this evening, so we will move right along to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when you make a public comment, and if you are going to make a public comment, come and step up to the podium.
I am Andy Smith. I'm the president of Smith Construction. I'm here to answer any questions on item three, if you have any. Just want to make myself available, so you know who I am.
Thank you. Anyone? Go ahead.
Mike Smith, 130 West Washington, Suite L-12, Marquette, Michigan. I come before you tonight to inquire in regard to item number three, which just recently came to my attention. We have had conversations in the past regarding the shoreline project, which is obviously something that's important to all of us. I came before you back in May of '22, questioning multiple items: turbidity curtain replaced three times, three complete topography surveys, under item 46, item six, contaminated soil, reuse of stone, item six, item 14 does control, item 44 signage, item 45 monitoring benchmarks. Same questions still happen, yet when I inquired, asked to, since this project has been on the books for more than a year and a half and nothing has happened, would there be another process for an open bid? That question was never answered, and now I find out that it's on the agenda for approval. And the bids went from originally, and excuse me, I'm going to have to go back and look through some notes, but it went from, Smith Construction went from four point, little over 4.3 million to now exceeding 5.8 million with a 10% contingency, which brings them in line with the other three contractors that bid this a year and a half ago, yet did not have another opportunity to bid this project. And I'm wondering why that process wasn't, why the open bidding process was not followed. It was just as, at least by this, being considered to be handed to them. I certainly have a problem with that. I'm sure my, our contractors that have put bids on this would have a concern over this. And I hope that all of you would consider this before making a decision to award this to Smith Construction. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
First of all, Happy Lunar New Year. One of the offshoots of my travel to the Far East, give me an insight to the holidays they celebrate in China, and their new year is based on a cycle of different animals, and this is the year of the dragon, and I'm celebrating it because it's just a happy time. I'm here tonight to say some things in thanksgiving to the members of the Marquette City Police Department, the members of the NMU Police Department, who came to my class last Thursday at my request. And to name the officers, it was Officer Chris Aldrich of the Marquette Police Department. I don't know his regular job, but I know he's on the dive team. And Officer John Kovar, I think he's a detective lieutenant of the NMU Police Department. And you're saying, why did you have the police come to your class? And it's because we had the incident at City Hall, which was resolved, as we all know. However, word gets, it's differently communicated to different people. And when this happened last year at Michigan State, many of my students had that deer-caught-in-headlight look, and I decided the only thing I could do for them was bring in officers for a safety meeting. And so we repeated it again last Thursday, and I wanted you to know that my students were engaged with the officers. I want to read this one without identifying it. "Thank you for coming to speak on Thursday. It was extremely informative. I was, I was the student that asked about whether regular, unaffiliated people can bring concealed carry onto campus. I was truly curious about it. I had to file a report on the dome incident about the man who asked about whether he could have a gun on campus. It appeared that he most likely had a concealed carry on him at the time, and it was very startling. I also know from work about active shooter training, it's scary, we have to have it. Thank you for giving us real-life examples and tips on how to stay safer." And this is a part of police work. I was here two weeks ago when you quite properly acknowledged the bravery of the people who worked hard to end that terrible incident. I just wanted to make a note of the people who work hard every day to keep us as safe as possible. And both these officers, it, a group of students is tough. You don't know what the next question's going to be. Probably, my favorite question was the guy, it's always a guy who asked, what's the highest speeding ticket you ever rode? And the response back was 105 over the speed limit at Marquette Mountain. And every man in my class was excited, and I had to stand up and say, that is not a challenge. No one is to go that fast. You don't get points for that. But we do pay great attention, and we should, to the people on the front lines, but this is a type of proactive policing that is so valuable. And my students' thank you notes reflect on what they learned and an opportunity to engage proactively with professional police officers. And they also have the email addresses of a person in Marquette and a person in Northern. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed, and we will move on to our presentation. This evening, we have a presentation on the Peter White Public Library by our library director, Andrea Ingmar, and she's stepping up to the podium now.
Good evening. What's up? Okay, am I close enough? I can move it a little bit. Good evening, everyone. I'm always delighted to come in and make a presentation, and I know I have 10 minutes, so I'll be brief. The mission of the Peter White Public Library is to enrich the community through access to library services and cultural opportunities. We have a service area that includes the city of Marquette and five surrounding townships. The city of Marquette, Peter White established the library in 1871 with an Act of Michigan Legislation, and we're also part of the city charter. Our township's contracts are voted on every two to four years, and the townships that we have contracts with are Chocale, Marquette Sands, Scandia, and West Branch. We have a governance board, which you all are involved in appointing, and an advisory council that are appointed by our township boards. These folks are amazing. We are very fortunate to have an excellent governing and advisory council, governing board and advisory council. These folks are really invested in the library and how the library can benefit our community at large. Both groups are instrumental in our long-range planning and participated in our recent strategic planning process. In April 2022, we worked with Fast Forward Libraries to update the library's strategic plan. In January 2023, the plan was adopted by our Board of Trustees. The plan is intended to be a living document, relying on three strategic priorities as our framework. Those are service, sustainability, and expertise. I will be updating you on the progress of our strategic plan, action items using these strategic priorities. So our first one is service, and this one's really focused around building and strengthening the core services of the Peter White Public Library. I would not be a librarian if I didn't talk about books, so books are still very central to what we do at the library. We're growing young readers and supporting adult readers. This is a brief overview of our collection counts. You'll see that our print, audio, and video collections are pretty stagnant. They're holding steady. We are weeding and adding new items to those collections all the time. Electronic materials are certainly our largest growing collection, and physical items are growing quite quickly as well. Those include the Library of Things, Youth Kits, and Tonys. Tonys are our newest physical collection. Digital resources, we haven't added any new resources in several years, but Canopy just added BBC content, so I'm pretty excited about that. Circulation stats are back to pre-pandemic levels. I'm delighted to say that. You'll notice that this is an overview of both physical and digital circulation statistics, and digital are certainly growing faster than the physical items, but I anticipate our 2024 statistics, physical, will exceed that 2019 figure. Programming continues to be a very large part of what we do. This is an overview of some of our most popular events of the last year. Movies and music continue to be very popular with our adults. New to the library is adult crafting programs, that's the mushrooms there. We have a local felter who's very popular at the library. Art exhibits continue to be very popular, and a couple new youth programs are targeted programs that are focused around a theme. So this is a photo from our Pokemon program, which we had hundreds of kids showed up, show up for. So we're trying programming that's really targeted on certain demographics, and Pokemon was a big hit. The other really fast-growing program is Dungeons and Dragons. We've been working with Iron Gollum Games to make that program take place, and it's so popular, we've had to go out and look for other DMs because there are too many kids who want to do it. It's exciting. This is an overview of program attendance over the last five years, and you can clearly see 2023 statistics exceed our pre-pandemic numbers. Some upcoming programs that I want to quickly mention. Media Smart starts on February 20th and runs the 28. That's programming all around the topics of misinformation. We have a League of Women Voters media panel that's taking place. We've got Sue Ellen Christian, who is an expert in information literacy, coming up to do a program. We're doing a community read. We also have a program on AI and banking fraud. So those are all topics we think will be of interest and are related to misinformation. Winter reading is taking place right now. If you have kids that like rocks, this is a great program because the kids are able to earn rocks for every reading log that they fill out. We started a teen reading series called Write On, and I'll just share a real quick program. I do a community office hours every month, and I had a teenager walk by during one of those office hours, and she had just left Write On, and she said, I am so glad you're doing this program because not every kid is athletic, and I am really glad to have a program that's focused on things that I like to do. So it's really nice to hear that feedback. Coming up in April is our Great Lakes Poetry Festival, and that has been underwritten by the Library of Michigan this year, so we're very excited about that. Computer use, these statistics are interesting. You can see that they are not really rebounding in the same way as our circulation or our programming count. I think this is a trend that we're going to see hold true. We do have a lot of people using wireless that aren't reflected on this. We have our major wireless connection, the one that goes out to the parking lot, does not count statistics. It was too costly to get a counter put on that device, so we decided to not do that. You can see that change that happened in 2020 during the pandemic. That's when we added that wireless port. We have a number of e-newsletters. In 2022, we added focused content. We're now, we now have eight newsletters that we send out, and they are sent out on a variety of different frequencies and with different topics. During strategic planning, patrons and staff noticed the need for improved marketing and branding. In 2023, we issued an RFP and engaged Bennett Media Group to rejuvenate our branding and ultimately our logo. Half-circular windows at Peter White have been used in library branding in the past, and we felt if we were to move away from the logo that included the building, we should revisit that previous logo with the windows. We're very pleased with the outcome. We think it's very clean. It's much easier to work with and looks very professional. We also just redesigned our entire website. It was limping along with a lot of Band-Aids, very difficult to update, and this new one is a lot cleaner, it's easier to use, definitely on the staff end, easier to update, and we hope it's easier to navigate. Digitization, we've been working with Uplink for the last couple of years. Uplink is out of the NMU archives, and this digitization process has been amazing. The Cloverland magazine, if you're not familiar with it, was an agricultural marketing magazine that was published in the UP from 1916 to 1923. That was the first collection that we digitized and uploaded to Uplink, and then we started with the Mining Journal. That is now from 1868 to 1966, and it's really, it's really cool what you can find in the Mining Journal from those old editions. I will note that we plan to continue digitizing the Mining Journal until we get to 1977. We have been attempting to get copyright approval from the Mining Journal to go past that point, but once we get to 1977, if we don't have something in writing, we have to stop. So we're working really hard to get that approval so that we can continue with all of the microfilm that's available. Our next item of strategic priority is sustainability, so doing all of that, that we just talked about, in an environmentally and financially sustainable way. Here's a quick overview of our expenses and the major categories of the library's budget. Of course, everyone can clearly see wages and benefits are the largest part of our budget. That is definitely not abnormal for libraries or for most municipal governments like ours. And I think it's really interesting to note that the benefits is the largest growing category, and I know the commission is very familiar with the impact of MERS over time and how that impacts the budget overall. Revenues, revenues are a little deceiving. This orange, light orange bar in the middle includes interest revenue, which in 2002 was a negative figure of $70,000, so that's why that one looks a little off. It should be about the same bar as these others. I think maybe next year I'll just leave interest off of here because it's not actually real money that we utilize in our budget. Exciting news from the financial sustainability standpoint is last year we were able to take distributions from our endowments for the first time. Our endowment started in 2015 and have grown to over $872,000 as a whole, and this last year we took $20,000 to put into the operating budget, which is amazing. Our last strategic priority is expertise. So looking back at those budget numbers, that's, this group right here is the reason that those budget numbers are so high. Our staff are our most important asset. They are what makes the whole thing happen. Without these folks, we would not be able to offer all of those wonderful programs and services that we offer. Our friends at the library are also hugely important to what we do. The Friends not only stock the book sale, our bookstore, that's pictured here on the screen, but they run two book sales a year. Our next book sale is March 14 through 16, and we have had so many donations coming in, so I think it's going to be a rather large spring book sale. Typically, they would be a little bit smaller than the fall book sale, but it looks like it's going to be a big one. And they also work with us on programming and are starting their own author series this summer. We have several other partner organizations that we work with. Our master gardeners help us keep the front of the library looking so beautiful. They really do 100% of the work on the flowers. Our maintenance staff do none of it. They mow the lawn, otherwise it's up to the master gardeners, and they do a wonderful job. They're already planning for spring. And the Marquette Sister Cities Partnership, they handle the Sister Cities Room at Peter White. They rotate out the collections. They're very engaged with us. Whenever they have a delegation come to town, we like to see them in the library and show them the space that we have dedicated to that partnership. And then the Queen City Seed Library, again, thinking about spring, we do have seeds that can be checked out, grown, hopefully returned if you have a viable growing season, and really, this is just a way to get seeds in and the opportunity to grow food into the folks in our community. We also have several interns and volunteers. We have a great relationship with the Student Leader Fellowship Program at Northern, and we see a lot of honor society students, both from Bothwell, MSHS, and other area schools. Upcoming, we have a pretty big, pretty big year, next couple of years. Of course, we are starting to have discussions about what will happen when MACC transitions from the library, what that means for the community, and what opportunities there might be in that space. We have a pretty serious issue with our front lower steps on Front Street. They are deteriorating quite rapidly. You've probably seen some caution tape out here, out front of the library there. It's a little unsightly. We're hoping to take care of that in this next spring/summer. The fiberglass atrium on top of the library is showing signs of wear. We have occasional leaks, so looking ahead, we also know that that's, that has a limited timeframe for its viability, and we'll have to be deciding what to do when that finally needs to be replaced. We're evaluating all of our spaces at Peter White. There's some underutilized spaces and some that are overutilized and need a little more space. I have the teen zone here pictured because they, we worked with NMU's construction management classes last semester to have them do a feasibility study on what it would take to move that space to another part of the library. In a perfect world where HVAC cooperated and all the things worked, it was pretty costly, so we decided that if we are going to move the space, it'll be a more ramped down and probably more fluid move than what was proposed by Northern, although that sounds lovely. And then in 2024, we hope to be on the ballot for a renewal of contract for all of our townships, and that would be at the November election. That's all I have. I would be delighted to answer any questions that you may, may have.
Thank you, Andrea. Commissioners comments? Commissioner Smith, she's jumping right in there.
I feel like I'm just, you know, every year, broken record. I love the library, we love the library, my kids are there every week, sometimes multiple times a day, and I once heard it described, I think it was Commissioner Stonehouse, that said that Peter White Public Library is the crown jewel of the Queen City, the city of Marquette, and I've never heard a better description. Thank you for all you do. I do have one question. The Friends of the Library book sales, if we have books to donate that are maybe are like newer books or things, like where can that, when, are there limited times? I don't want to just bring you a bunch of junk, but that might be good for the public to know.
Donations can take place anytime that we're open.
Okay.
Yeah. And sometimes people even stick them in the book drop, although we'd rather you just brought them in.
Yeah, I would just have a small box, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, Andrea, thank you so much. You know, one of the things, one of the ways that you can tell you have a really vibrant library is the parking lot. And when I go to the library for an event or just go to stop in, and I can't find a parking spot, it tells me how vibrant the library is and how much things have changed and have improved over the several years. So thank you so much, and I agree with Commissioner Smith, what a jewel we have here in our library.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have the consent agenda in front of us, and this will be a roll call vote, so do I have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And is there a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Okay. Comments? Commissioner Otte?
No, just reminding you, I believe there is a roll call needed.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Larson, did you have something to say, or you're just, okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you. So I'll call the questions. City Clerk, will you call roll call, please?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to new business, our first item is Lake Superior Shoreline Restoration Project Contract Approval. City Clerk, may I have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Plans have been developed for the restoration of the Lake Superior Shoreline adjacent to Lake Shore Boulevard between Holly Street and Pine Street. This proposed project includes shoreline armoring and stabilization, habitat restoration, and the creation of enhanced public areas. Baird Engineering was the consulting engineer utilized for this project. This project is partially funded by a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. The city publicly advertised a request for construction bids for this project, and four bidders responded. A bid opening occurred on May 5, 2022, and results are summarized below. Smith Construction, $4,312,877.60. Payne and Dolan from Milwaukee, $6,248,763.95. A. Lindbergh &amp; Sons at $6,291,840.70. Baco Construction Company at $6,345,920.20, and the engineer's estimate was $7,360,000. At their May 31, 2022, meeting, the City Commission tentatively selected Smith Construction as the con- as the contractor pending final approval of permits from Eagle and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This bid was set to expire 120 days after bid opening and was extended by mutual agreement. Due to unique circumstances, the project permits were not issued until November 15, 2023. Some modifications were made to the design to allow for permitting. The city recently requested updated costs from Smith Construction, Inc. to account for design modifications and construction cost increases. Smith provided the city with an updated proposal to complete the revised project at a cost of $5,817,941.26. Fiscal effect: Sufficient funds were approved in the fiscal year 2022 budget and were part of the fiscal year 2022 bond package. Recommendation: Approve a contract with Smith Construction for the Lake Superior Shoreline Restoration Project at a cost of $5,817,941.26 based on quantities and unit prices in the proposal. Allow the city manager to use a 10% contingency for any unknown circumstances and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Pro Tim Hanley?
I move that we approve a contract with Smith Construction for the Lake Superior Shoreline Restoration Project at a cost of $5,817,941.26 based on quantities and unit prices in the proposal. Allow the city manager to use a 10% contingency for any unknown circumstances and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Comments? Pro Tim Hanley?
If it's okay with you, I'd like to pitch this over to the city manager to address some of the comments from public comment.
Sure. City Manager?
Certainly. And I know I have Dennis Stankovits here on standby as well, and I'm going to turn it over to him in a moment here, but I do just want to reiterate the fact that in May of 2022, the city did conditionally award that contract awaiting those final permits. And unfortunately, there were some things that were beyond our control, and after a lot of time and work putting into, I wouldn't say really fighting for these permits to get these done as quickly as possible, we ended up in November of 2023 when those permits were finally approved with slight modifications, which I'm incredibly proud of as well because this took some time to really get to this point. Now, per the contract documents, the contractor was required to honor their bid, the bid that they had provided for 120 days after that bid opening, unless it was mutually agreed upon and could extend it, and they did. But Smith did provide some updated costs after there had been some slight modifications, and then also due to the almost 18 months here that has passed, and that updated costs were still below all originally submitted bids. 10% contingency is typically what is put in there for some unforeseen costs for those larger projects as well. So and due to these circumstances of the delay, and I think we've talked about this before, the bids were already published and were out there, and so rebidding this project would have really kind of challenged the integrity of the bidding process for that. So we felt very comfortable with keeping the bids and extending that time as we are. Dennis, did you have more to add to that?
Just one thing, that was wonderfully summarized. But I also wanted to go a little bit deeper in that we did review these costs, the increases across Michigan and across the Midwest as well, to make sure that they're within the ballpark. And the updated costs for the materials in there were actually pretty much lower than what we're seeing across the Midwest, and I think that has to do with the fact that they can do a lot of their own rock stuff. But we were seeing over 40% across the board total across the Midwest region in increases. So what they proposed actually made us feel more comfortable because it's actually lower than what we're seeing.
And there is grant funding tied to this project as well, and so getting this continued and actually completed is critical to continue.
Yeah, there's, I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I apologize for that, but there's over a million, like $1.7 million of this that is, is grant funded that goes towards the $5 million.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hanley, anything further?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with continuing with Smith Construction. It may not be to this scale. Obviously, this is an enormous project, but I feel like there are two to three times a year where we face this kind of a, there's a delay, we have, you know, there's an issue with the state or some permitting, et cetera, and it delays us, or we didn't see a delay coming, and then we have to go back, you know, and have the bid recalculated, or maybe it would always be a bid, it may be a piece of equipment, et cetera. I've seen this example play out, and I feel like we are doing the best we can with a complicated situation, and I do feel confident that we are being responsible with taxpayer dollars here. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner, Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make it clear before I kind of make my comment here that none of it's directed at the folks at Smith Construction, I just want that to be clear. But, you know, 20 months ago, when we talked about this, there was a lot of the concerns that were reraised tonight, and the discrepancies between the bids were raised. And I distinctly remember asking, who pays the difference if those discrepancies do in fact come up as a cost? And I was assured that that would be on the contractors, not the city. Now, I was still fairly green on the commission, and I can acknowledge that that may have been a little naive of me here, but we're talking about a $1.5 million increase, and with the 10% flexibility with there, that would actually exceed the next three bids. So I'm curious why we did not give the other bidders an opportunity to submit new numbers, because they frankly could have been the lowest bidders, because that's really what we're basing this off of. So I, I would just like some, some context there as to why the approach that was taken was the one taken, because even still looking at some of the numbers from previously to now, some of those discrepancies are still there, and they would, without a doubt, be higher than the other bid amounts.
Okay. Could I bring this back over to the city manager or to Dennis Stankovits?
Certainly. And there were specific line items, I believe, that were questioned, and then maybe perhaps you're referring to, and I don't have the details on that. But as for the 10% contingency, that is something that we do have in all of the contracts typically for something the size of this. Dennis, specifically, the, there's some line items that has some questions that were well under perhaps other bids in there, and the question, I believe, that Commissioner Mayor is asking is, if those do in fact come up higher, are we to eat those costs versus the contractor, correct?
That was the question I, I raised when we discussed it back in 2022, yes. Because with that 10%, I mean, we're talking almost $600,000 that could very well cover those costs. So would they actually pay those then, or would we then at that point?
You're talking about instance, so if there's, if, that would run into an issue of per se that contingency is in there for something that's unforeseen or didn't come up. So if they do something in there that is a set established price, that's what the set established price is, and quite often, they do eat a lot of that. The 10% contingency is typically in there if they, we didn't account for in our project planning that they're going to run into a buried fuel tank or something along those lines that wasn't planned for.
Thank you, Dennis.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Otteway?
Yeah, one of the things I struggle with this is that you have, well, at least a couple, timeline for Commissioner Schlegel might be a little bit off there, but at least Commissioner Larson and myself, we were not on the board at the time of this bid process. So trying to understand the, the numbers, you know, basically, we're, we're kind of being thrown into that. So one of the things I would like to ask right now is if I can have a full rundown on what is actually budgeted for, that we're, it says fiscally it's there, but what is the actual amount we've budgeted for? And does the 10% actually, does it include that in the budget?
I'll bring it back over to you.
Of course. Yes, this is one that is a little bit more complicated as well because there are several layers of grant funding, but then also there is the bonding that is included in here as well. And the, this project was split up between a Phase One and a Phase Two, and so there is some difference there. But I do believe that this one is one where we are, we are covered with our bond issuance and as well as grant funding.
Yeah, and the breakdown on that is, there's around, I want to say $1.7 million coming from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation. I mean, I'm just going to give that to you. I'm not going to go down to the cents level. Honestly, I don't have. And then the rest of that comes from the, like Karen said, the bond issue on the city.
So yes, it's well within, yes. Actually, it is below that because of the original estimates were in the 7.3 or 7.4 million for this portion of that project, and it is coming in closer to that 5.8 with the 10% contingency as well.
The, the city engineer was quite happy with that in, in that there's, might be some money left over from the bond issue to actually do some roads.
Question? Commissioner Larson?
I only have one question, not necessarily about the dollar amounts, but are we in any danger of timelines shifting on this for now, moving forward?
Hey, we have, we have, I would say, really begged on a lot of these timelines and have been quite successful with getting them extended. In terms of the grants, I believe that we are still doing just fine with the timing of that because there has been a portion that has been completed, and we are still able to complete this project and still have the funding.
I can add that we did get an extension on the NIFWIT grant when we were going through the permitting process. All of the permits are signed and in hand, which is why we're bringing this forward. Now, that was the, that was the trigger to be able to do that. So if this were approved, or once it is approved, whatever happens, it's, once it's signed, the work starts.
Commissioner Mayor?
And forgive me, because I don't know the staff side and how long some of these things take, but I mean, if, if the folks that were willing to grant us those funds could wait 20 months for us to get to this point, I mean, how long does a rebid process take?
I mean, the rebid process, there's notice, there's opening, I mean, that, that can range from anywhere between a 30 to 45 day, or you have to get it reviewed as well.
Yeah, that would put us out of the grant funding, plus any possible legal challenges about the integrity of the process of rebidding it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Your Honor, I would just like to point out that this is a difficult situation for the commission. It has been a difficult situation, this piece of road and how we do it. I have a great fear of kicking this can down the road and what that could mean for the fact that we would not get significant grant funding now and in the future would be more my concern because we would maybe appear to be uncooperative with some of the folks who are willing to hand us quite a bit of money. I understand that that, it's not meant to be like a threat, I'm just concerned that we may miss our window here.
Commissioner Otteway?
Is there any legal concern for not going back to the bid process after this length of time?
That's probably an attorney question, but speaking to the process.
But we've talked about this.
There was a clause for the mutual agreement.
Yeah, and I mean, that's the thing. So this bid was awarded, there was a clause with, that being, could be extended on prior mutual agreement, and because of the unique circumstance of the difficulty in getting the permit, that had been extended. So there's, we still have a bid approval with Smith at this point that we're updating. If we were to go out on new bids, regardless of the losing the grant timeline, that stuff, certainly we would be opening ourselves to a legal challenge for not honoring that extension and that bid that was already granted.
Understand, yeah. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't something kind of both ways there. I appreciate it.
Any other commissioners? Well, thank you for the discussion and the questions to clarify things and for your answers, city staff. I'm really pleased that the permits are all signed and we're ready to go. This year, it's been a number of years that we've been looking at this project. So I will call the question. Commissioners, all those in favor, say yes.
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 And those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes six to one. So we'll move on in our new business. Item number four, the PIDP Protecting Critical Infrastructure and Improving Efficiency Dredging Project, a contract approval. And City Clerk, may I have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette received a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation Maritime Administration for dredging at the mouth of the Dead River near the Upper Harbor Or Dock. The proposed project will realign the buffer, the river outlet, to a more favorable location. Dredge sands will be beneficially reused for shoreline stabilization and restoration at various locations between Fair Avenue and Holly Street. The city is partnering with Cliff's Natural Resources, LSNI Railroad, on this project with LSNI funding. The non-federal match portion is shown in the attached memorandum of understanding. The city advertised this project for bids on December 19, 2023. A bid opening occurred on February 1, 2024, with five bidders responding. The results are summarized below. K&amp;M Industrial LLC bid $980,496.43. Smith Construction, $1,000,926.64. MJO Contracting with $1,174,031.10. MAE with $1,190,950. Vite and Company, $1,199,42.50. And the engineer's estimate for the project was $1,210,938.50. Fiscal effect: None. City expenses will be fully reimbursed by the Port Infrastructure Development Grant. Recommendation: Approve a contract with K&amp;M Industrial LLC of Gladstone, Michigan at a cost of $980,496.43 based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize the city manager to use remaining grant funding allocated toward construction with a total amount not to exceed $1,480,000 for any unknown circumstances and additional dredging if permitted. And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with K&amp;M Industrial LLC of Gladstone, Michigan at a cost of $980,496.43 based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize the city manager to use remaining grant funding allocated towards construction with a total amount not to exceed $148,000 for any unknown circumstances. Oops, did I miss it? $1,480,000, excuse me. Very important, miss. For any unknown circumstances and additional dredging if permitted, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. May I have a second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
You know, this is kind of a new one. I was really excited to see come across our desk. It's going to be a great reuse of the spoils, and we're going to be able to put them where we need them. And I just, I think that the opportunity for this to get paid for the way that it is is just a real gift for the city, so thankful to see it.
Okay. Commissioner Otteway?
No.
Any other commissioners? Comments? Okay. Well, I will call the vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. With no further new business, we're going to move on to the second public comment session. Public comment is now open.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Mike Smith, 130 West Washington, Marquette, Michigan. Again, I would call into question the transparency of this project or the rebidding of this due to changes in scope and design. I believe that should have been rebid and gone through the process one more time. Ultimately, it came down to a negotiation internally with a $1.5 million increase, which, again, I think lacks transparency. So obviously, not real supportive of this decision, but it is what it is, so thank you.
Margaret Brum for 4 East Magnetic Street. This is a save the date.
This is a save the date announcement to everyone within sound of my voice. Thursday, February 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., I will be presenting an educational program at the Peter White Public Library, formed in 1871. I just learned that tonight. In the Chivers Room, the subject matter of this presentation is patents, trademarks, and copyrights, which is the area of law that I have specialized in for over 30 years. The reason I'm doing this is because there's a number of different issues percolating through the internet, some of which have my name on it. And I have noticed an abundance of misinformation and also interesting ways of describing things that simply don't match with the law. And you can fuss on the internet, we can all fuss on the internet, or you can make an effort to reach out to people and explain what's actually the law and what isn't the law. And it's free to everyone. Of course, being an attorney, I will accept all free will offerings. I won't turn anybody down. And for those of you with children, it would be suitable for anyone in the fifth grade and above. There's no, there's no really distinction there. And in fact, some of my best ways of explaining these things are with toys like Lincoln Logs and things where you think it was, since it was an old toy, there's no protection left, but it's still registered trademark. And part of the reason for the inconsistency of commentary and the fact that some, some of the things I've said have been challenged, I don't look like a lawyer. And I just was looking over at the city lawyer and the city manager, and they're, take one look at them and you know exactly the positions they occupy. If you'd seen me in my corporate days, I wore blue suits and black suits, and I was always uncomfortable because there's no business made that fits a woman. And I looked, sounded, acted like a lawyer 24/7. In fact, there's a picture of me in the Chinese Patent Office, and I downright look like I know what I'm talking about. But since I've been home in Marquette, I have not always presented in that level of presentation. So I'm going to make an effort to make up for the lack of presentation with an abundance of good information. And that's my, that's on me. So I welcome, I welcome everyone. I especially welcome the members of the Public Art Committee that have somehow have been understood and managed to convince the city that owning the copyright in the art we're paying a fortune for is not critical. I have a different point of view, and I hope to be able to share that with all of you, how important that could be. So February 29th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and I promise you, I will dress and talk like a lawyer. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed, and we'll move on to comments from the commission. I'm going to start over on my right with Commissioner Larson.
I don't think I have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mayor?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, just real quick, obviously, there's no snow outside. Commissioner Smith and Mayor Pro Tem Hanley being big skiers, I'm sorry for that. I'm also sorry for many of the businesses around that I know that both of them would echo and say that are very much hurting, not only in the city of Marquette but on the outskirts as well. So if you're looking for something to do fun and local, take your family out to dinner, take them for a, you know, a staycation around the city or local, go spend some money to those nice businesses locally because they're probably in desperate need. That's it.
Thank you. Pro Tem Hanley?
That is absolutely true. I would also like to say that this Friday, everyone can join the Festival of the Sled Dog. With the sled dogs being canceled, Northern did step up yet again this year, and there will be a wonderful, family-friendly event starting at 6:30 is the opening ceremonies. There's going to be a warm-up event at the Trenery Toast Cafe with free chocolate and cinnamon rolls and coffee while Willie will be there along with President Testman and his wife. And there'll be a hot chocolate tent for an Amu and Lung alumni. Plus, now that we have the wonderful social district we have, you can grab yourself a spiked hot chocolate if you would like between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. But so everyone go down and enjoy that and support the local businesses that are there while you're doing it.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor, and most for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
No comment this evening. Thank you.
It's one of those evenings with not a lot of comments. I'm going to just follow up with Commissioner, or Pro Tem Hanley's comment about the Festival of the Sled Dog, which I'm really looking forward to. And one of the other things that I think is pretty exciting is they're going to put a lot, the snow that we have on Third Street and allow people to sled down Third Street. So let's all join that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to set out another reminder that the next meeting for the City Commission will be on Tuesday, February 20th, which is different than our normal schedule. Not only is it not a Monday, it's a Tuesday due to President's Day, but it's also not the normal Tuesday that we follow, or Monday. Oh, golly. See now, I'm not going to even know what day it is. Not the normal Monday that we do follow for City Commission meetings, and that's due to the presidential primary election that is scheduled for, that's Tuesday, February 27th. So it'll be next week, Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. And also, the next community office hours with myself will be February 14th, and that will be at the Peter White Public Library from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And that is just an opportunity to come on in and have a cup of coffee and talk about anything that is related to the city. And it's a good time to get some issues out there, or it's a good time to come and say thanks to city staff that is there. So we appreciate it certainly if we can have those conversations. And then I also just wanted to touch on the fact that we have a new-to-us fire truck that is out and about. You may notice that we have a white and red fire truck now that complements our yellow or some call it green and blue fire truck, and then also our ladder truck as well. But if you see it out there, that's us. Maybe not myself, but that is our fire department out there, and that is a really clever way that we have been able to keep some of our fleet up and running and be able to have a full garage of our fire apparatus. So if you haven't seen it, check it out, keep an eye on it, and I hope you all enjoy it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one last comment, I'll be joining the city manager at the office hours at 10:45 to 12:00.
Do you have valentines for people?
I could bring valentines if people come, sure.
Okay. Very good.
Now I'm committed. Okay. That concludes our meeting at 6:52 p.m.